Elected officials should be provided to the city clerk and should include a copy for the city clerk for inclusion in the official record. The meeting schedule, I was about to say our meeting schedule, but the meeting schedule for December is Tuesday, December third, two thousand and twenty four. There's a work session at four P M. Tuesday, December tenth, there's a work session at four P M. Thursday, December twelfth, a strategic planning meeting from nine A M. to twelve thirty P M. Tuesday, December seventeenth, two thousand and twenty four, there's a regular session at seven P M. Tuesday, December twenty fourth, no meeting scheduled, and Tuesday, December thirty first, there is no meeting scheduled. Proclamations will be municipal government works month. We will have agenda items, citizen comments. Citizens are welcome to provide comments in person or by sending an email to councilcomments@hagerstownmd.org. No later than five P M. on Tuesday, November nineteenth, two thousand and twenty four. Please include your name, home address, and topic of your comments. You may attach a letter to the email or write your comments in the body of the message. The city clerk will read your name, address, and provide a summary of the comments. The full copy of comments will be provided for public viewing as part of the minutes. We have a public hearing, ratification of annexation resolution for I seventy row and Colonel Henry K. Douglas row. Minutes for October first, October eighth, October fifteenth, and October twenty twenty, October, October twenty second, two thousand and twenty four. Consent agenda, city clerk, six iPad Pros with keyboard, Staples Inc., Chicago, Illinois, seven thousand five hundred fifty eight dollars and sixty eight cents. Engineering, R T K, G P S survey, complete package setup, Karen East, Inc., Cumberland, Maryland, thirteen thousand seven hundred and forty dollars. Miscellaneous stormwater engineering services, retainer contract, Frederick, Frederick Seibert and Associates, Hagerstown, Maryland, and Baylin Consultants, Hanover, Maryland. Information technology, Barracuda Essentials, annual software renewal, system source, Hunt Valley, Maryland, one hundred and nineteen, two hundred and thirty three thousand, one hundred and nineteen thousand, two hundred and thirty three dollars and fifteen cents. For police, H P D, third floor office and restroom renovations, change orders. Pop, pop, popowski Brothers, Inc., Cockeysville, Maryland, fifty thousand nine hundred and fifty four dollars. Six, two thousand and twenty five Ford interceptors, utility A W D vehicles, forty six thousand four hundred and thirty five dollars each. New Holland All Group, New Holland, P A, with a total of two hundred and seventy eight thousand, six hundred and ten dollars. Vehicle uplifting for police interceptors, utility A W D, East Coast Emergency Lighting, Inc., Millstone Township, New Jersey, seventy eight thousand, two hundred and forty nine dollars and ninety nine cents. For public works, John Deere Rough mower repairs, Finch Turf, Eldersburg, Maryland, nineteen thousand dollars, nineteen thousand sixty five dollars. Motorroller two-way radio model, X P R, five, fifty-three, fifty E, Hankies Radio, Inc., Frederick, Maryland, nine thousand eight hundred and ninety-four dollars and ten cents. Water in sand, ballast, roadway jersey barriers, software, Inc., Landham, Maryland, four thousand four hundred and forty-two dollars and forty-one cents. Traffic barricades and traffic barrels at Safewear, Inc., Landham, Maryland, four thousand two hundred and fifty-eight dollars. Cardinal Zone Challenger Play Structure Plus Installation Playground Specialist, Inc., Thurmont, Maryland, one hundred and thirty-six thousand, five hundred and forty dollars. Pricing shown for bulk diesel and gasoline purchase in the total Washington County bid price. The original city purchase order for each component will be approved, physical year, two thousand and twenty-five. Budget, budget totals, bulk diesel fuel and gasoline purchase, trans, transport deliveries, Petroleum Traders Corporation, Fort Wayne, Indiana, seven hundred and sixteen thousand dollars. Bulk gasoline and diesel fuel purchase, smaller quantities, James River Solutions, L L C, Ashland, Virginia, seven hundred and sixteen thousand dollars. Greg O'Long Stripper, 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 Greg O'Long Stripper and related equipment, Sherman Williams, Hagerstown, Maryland, eighteen thousand, eight hundred and forty-three dollars and ninety-nine cents. Park equipment, benches, picnic tables, and trash receptacles, Metro Recreation, North Jefferson, Maryland, thirty-two thousand, seven hundred and sixty-two dollars and ten cents. Toro, Ariator, Inturo Bullseye Rapid Speed, five hundred and ninety turf equipment and supply company, Jessup, Maryland, fifty-two thousand, four hundred and ninety-two dollars and seventy-one cents. Utilities, light, M E A, physical year, twenty-four, sole grant material, L E D light fixtures, signify North America, Somerset, New Jersey, one hundred and fifty-two thousand, eight hundred and forty-nine dollars. Light, H L D, facility backup generator, Fidelity Power Systems, Sparks, Maryland, one hundred and fifty-seven thousand, one hundred and, one hundred and fifty-seven thousand, one hundred and sixty dollars and forty-two cents. Light distribution line transformers, United Utility Supply, Chambersburg, Pennsylvania, thirty-two, thirty-seven thousand, two hundred dollars. Water treatment, chemical chlorine, Univar Solutions, Inc., Downers Grove, Illinois, fifty-one thousand, five hundred dollars. Water and wastewater, underground infrastructure marking for distribution and collections, U S I C locating services, Inc., Indianapolis, Indiana, hundred thousand dollars. Wastewater treatment plant improvements, S, Skata, Alt, whatever, Ultima, Ultima Tech, Plymouth, Maine, forty thousand, six hundred and thirty-four dollars. Wastewater treatment, chemical ferric chloride, Karima, Water Solutions, Inc., Lawrence, Kansas, twenty-eight thousand, nine hundred and twelve dollars. There is no unfinished business for new business. Approval of resolution, subrecipient, subrecipient agreement for Main Street Startup Grant, the Doghouse. Approval of two full-time positions, support services department. Approval of the execution of the formal collaboration of the Maryland Municipal Electric Utility Alliance. Approval of noise ordinance exemption, Hagerstown box cars, December seventh, two thousand and twenty-four, and Crumpies Donut Drop, December thirty first, two thousand and twenty-four. Approval of federal lobbyist contract with the Ferguson Group. Approval of agency contributions, approval of application for physical year, two thousand and twenty-six program open space funding. We'll have general citizen comments, and citizens are welcome to provide comments in person or by sending an email to councilcomments@hagerstownmd.org. No later than five P M. on Tuesday, November nineteenth, two thousand and twenty-four. Then we'll have city administrator comments, mayor and council comments, and then adjourn. Next up, we have a request for exemption from chapter one five five, noise for fireworks. And that is Donna Spickler, our city clerk, and Brittany Ermande, our community engagement officer.
Good afternoon. Dawn and I are here this afternoon to request an exemption from chapter one fifty-five, noise for fireworks. Is just stated in the preliminary agenda review. There are two dates, Saturday, December seventh, which is for a private event, and then Tuesday, December thirty first, for the Crumpies Donut Drop. Long hold times, we feel we'll just be more efficient, better able to serve, and we have a lot of exciting things coming up. The move down the street, new software, new cashiering, that's all going to take training time, time away from people actually out front. The deposit factor that used to take an hour every morning, we have now invoice cloud files, we have chase tech files, we have parking ticket files. So what used to be an hour process is now about a three and a half hour process to get all the payments, everything balanced, and done for the day. That's one person off the counter all morning, basically.
Those deposits aren't necessarily reconciling your credit cards. It's, there is still a tremendous volume, despite the fact that we have a lockbox. And, and a lot of our customers take advantage of that, which is a terrific, efficient manor for anybody with a larger business doing business, right? Because all that goes to the, the lockbox, financial institutions help process all that, but still somebody has to import files you have to reconcile. But everything is so different, so all the reconciliation does take much longer. One of the other things, of course, is collection, collection efforts, and we are just heading out of one of our busier times, October. While the weather was nice, was one of our last months that we could actually be progressive with making sure that we were, our customer base was staying current with their energy and like those. But the PowerPoint that's here, Ryan did a great job, is Beth, if you want to first page, there's some staffing summary, just so that you can see. Even though it sounds like we're hiring two whole people, really, our part-time person has been here for years. It's probably going to take one and a half just to do what she's able to do because she has so much.
Knowledge. She's been here forty years, so she retired and came back to work part-time, so. Yeah, her institutional knowledge is going to be hard to replace, and there's a lot of research that we get piles of return mail that are a foot high on a daily basis. And that all needs to be researched because we want to make sure we're getting that bill back out to customers. That all takes a tremendous amount of time.
And then on page three is a quick chart, Ryan, customer interactions, you just want to hit, these do not include what happens through the online payment portal. So this is in addition to this.
So this, just in a quick snapshot, this is for the past, you know, better part of all of two thousand and twenty-three, and now obviously almost the full year, two thousand and twenty-four. Emails is the big thing that jumps out. I've been here thirteen years, and I can tell you that has changed tremendously. Just in one weekend, holiday weekend, I had two hundred and fifty emails sitting in an inbox from a holiday weekend. That's a lot. They all have to be sorted through, everyone has to be checked, you know, we have to.
Followed up on.
Follow it up, respond. Phone calls are always a steady thing, that's something that has always just been there. I want to point out too, in some of the later things, it talks about average hold times and things in utility queue at different times of the year. That's just a snapshot, and that's average. It is not uncommon to have much longer hold times just because of the amount of volumes of things that we're doing. Everybody who sends the email, everybody who sends or makes the phone call, everyone who's in front of us, they deserve to be waited on and to be, you know, treated with respect and obviously efficiently. The problem is, it's a juggling act.
But just to be clear, again, on this, on page three, where you see forty-six thousand phone calls, those do not include the phone calls that go through the automated payment line.
Correct.
These are calls that do not go through a call service. They literally are being answered and go into a queue and wait for the members of the customer service representatives downstairs to answer.
Correct.
Who are also waiting on customers in line, maybe responding to an email for a title holding company. So this is, all of these statistics, while it seems like a lot, is in addition to all of the more efficient and automated processes that we put into place.
The I V R payments themselves, that are, that is the decision rate that is calling in to make the payment automated. But that's just the ones who make the payment, that doesn't even count the ones that are just checking the balances, has to be connected to a live representative, which is then tracked in an actual phone call. But that itself is split out, there's a lot of people using that service, and that's great, but we still have way more that are calling in every day.
And that's for basically five full-time people. And if one of them is working on a deposit, somebody's on vacation, somebody's out sick, somebody's eating lunch, somebody's on a break, then you're looking at three people handling all of this.
And I remember before COVID, you know, sitting down there with you and, you know, just being astonished at the amount of full-time. And everyone was working constantly trying to, it's not like everyone was, you know, lollygagging around.
There is.
Constant work, so I understand.
Constantly busy, constantly busy, and things have become more technical in regard. I mean, now the bank, several years ago, we do not send checks to the bank anymore, they stopped doing that. So we actually have a machine that is remote access deposit. We scan all the checks that come in, we scan that, send it in a file to the bank. So it's not like we're sending a deposit ticket with checks, that's all done in a different processing manner now, that all takes time.
And then the last two, as, as Ryan mentioned, are just, just a snapshot of just a specific month and the actual times and the phone for the waits, right? The time to answer and the number of calls. April focused on electric because it's a large month, we see a heavy volume, right? The first time that terminations and such happen. And then the very final one is for the month of July, just so that you can see real estate tax bills. While the number of tax bill that happen once a year in our annual, where the electric bills are monthly and the other utility bills for a large part or a quarterly basis. This is still a large number of incoming calls, just on the tax bills itself.
And again, I stress, that's just the average, that is not uncommon to have much longer wait times than that.
And to me, that's unacceptable, and to drop that volume of calls because we just don't have the staff to answer it, it's just, it's not acceptable. It's not the best customer service we can provide, so we're hopeful that we can hire two people to give the citizens. That's customer service.
Is this budget neutral in the memo, so is there an increase?
It, it'll be budget neutral because we have two floaters, which we will be eliminating. We won't have that expense coming out of our department, and the part-time person is looking to wind down and retire in two thousand and twenty-five.
So there's no additional cost to this request?
It, it will be, it would be small, and then what happens with customer service overall? Is that all the costs there are allocated out to the general fund for taxes. The portion of what they spend their time, taxes and trash, stay within the general fund, the rest go charged to electric, water, wastewater, parking, and stormwater. So it's shared expense across all the funds, so while it'd be very minimal in nature. I, I think one of the other things that we really want to make sure we mention is, even with the amount of staff, we do have a neat, new E R P system coming. We're going to need the additional assistance and focus so that our resources can really focus and get everything up and running. But something that's coming even sooner, right? Invoice Cloud, our payment portal system is going to be, we're going to have enhanced functionality, we're going to have the ability to do outbound.
Outbound campaigns, we will be able to text someone with, you currently can sign up for that, but if you were scheduled to have an interruption of service, we'll be able to send you a text message the day before. We're going to be able to text water outages, electric outages, all sorts of different things, if you opt in and sign up for that information. So we're getting ready to launch December first, some information out to the public, how to opt in and how to sign up for those types of text messages. And that'll be, we'll start with utilities, and then we'll work towards taxes and then other areas of the city.
It'd be another method of communication and a way of outreach for us to touch base with all of our customers as a reminder of a past due bill, for instance. Where, you know, a lot of times, I think people are relying upon us being able to actually send and hang door hangers, which may not be able to continue into the future. But again, we are still looking for ways to increase our communication efforts and our outreach to customers. So if everybody would be okay with this, this would be back one for next week in the regular session for formal vote.
Thank you, thank you for your time.
Thanks, Beth, thanks, Ryan.
Thank you.
Next up, we have Maryland Municipal Electric Utility Alliance Agreement, and we have Nathan Friedinger, Deputy Director of Electric Operations. Hi.
Hello, good evening, thanks for having me this evening. So you may remember from the past few years, representatives from the five municipal electric companies in the state will review legislative policy. And when, when the need arises, will lobby for revisions to the drafted bills presented in Annapolis each year. To dampen the financial impact on our, on our customers. The companies feel that a joint alliance will enhance, enhance our position. And make our, our presence a little more known with the legislative body. So attached to your memo is a copy of the agreement, it's in draft form, it has been reviewed by the city attorney. It is a non-binding agreement. Any expenses? Any expenses that the group decides would be, would be beneficial to, to the goals, would require unanimous consent amongst all five of the utilities. Hagerstown is the largest of the five, and those expenses, if, if agreed to, would, would equate to about fifty percent, we would, that would be our share. They are asking that this agreement be assigned or executed by the, the mayor. Unless there are any, any comments or questions that I need to take back to the, to the group for further review. We're asking for agreement this month, or I guess signature this month to take back, so.
And Nathan, this isn't, this agreement, this alliance, alliance is not an all or nothing, meaning all five of the municipalities do not have to opt in for this to move forward or do that.
Right, I believe it's written that a minimum of three of the five are required to form this, this alliance.
You guys, question?
I don't really have any questions, I mean, we're obviously the largest partner in this process. The alternative, you know what I mean, is that, is that we go out separately on the system, which is not beneficial to our customer base. So, you know, we seek a separate provider, which also is not beneficial to the customer base.
Agree.
Matt? Thank you.
All right, thanks very much.
Thank you. Physical year, twenty-six preliminary budget for general fund agency contributions, and right here beside me, Ms. Michelle Heffern, our Chief Financial Officer, and Ms. Brooke Garver, Accounting and Budget Manager. Hi, Brooke.
Hello. All right, so Michelle and I tonight are seeking direction on general fund agency contributions for the F Y twenty-six budget, which we're gearing up for right now. Just as a reminder, there is a city policy which I've attached to the memo. It allocates anywhere from two hundred and five thousand to two hundred and seventy-two thousand, one hundred dollars each fiscal years to eight core agencies. Those are Washington County Free Library, Washington County Museum of Fine Arts, Maryland Theater, Maryland Symphony Orchestra, Hagerstown Municipal Band, Community Rescue Services, Hagerstown Neighborhood Development Partnership, and Washington County Historical Society. The last several years, we've allocated two hundred and five thousand, with ten thousand of that being a contingency amount.
And, and just for clarification, because people are probably wondering, two hundred and five thousand to the two hundred and seventy-two thousand, one hundred is a very specific number. But it's because for several years, we had multiple year pledges and donations for both the Maryland Theater and the museum. And so we didn't want to have to come back every single year, once those agreements were placed, to constantly increase the amount. So we were able, years ago, to make this be a range. So that's why it's such a very specific amount. And again, unless we need to make updates after this evening, I would think that range would still be good, sorry, Brooke.
That's okay. That ten thousand dollar contingency for the last four years has gone to Heart of the Civil War Heritage Area. Started at seventy-two hundred in F Y twenty-two, and increased to ten thousand, just this current year, F Y twenty-five. So the ask tonight is, are there any changes to these contributions? And then would there be any changes to the policy for F Y twenty-six? The last time the policy was debated was in two thousand and twenty.
So are we still good with the eight agencies first? I know that this is a question every year, it generates a lot of conversation, but.
I know we, well, I brought up with the Dolman Heritage Museum, how we always get the requests every year for sponsored events, and how we could better support museums. And I brought up if we could add them to this, to this list, if they're applicable.
I guess my question would be, you know, well, not so much. So then, are you saying that if Dolman Black Heritage Museum came in and requested something for, say, Juneteenth, is that something completely separate?
Yeah, separate, like have, like have this funds to do whatever they need to do with it, so it's not the same request every year. Because we always get caught up with how much that should be, and, and instead of just having them part of the agency, core agency list. We can determine their funding now, and then they can use that for whatever they choose to do with it.
And typically, the agency contributions are not specific, are not for events, and all of the agencies should do a report back on their financial spend.
Do you get a financial back from each of these agencies?
We've got paper files, I'm very cheap enough. And I know the library and the museum both do annual updates. And I know the library and the museum both do annual updates. At least before COVID, they did annual updates and had luncheons. And they've slowly started bringing that back just this past, I think, this past fiscal year.
But I I didn't hear you say for the event, right? Just as an item.
Yeah, because I brought it up, and I just wanted to make sure we revisit it again with having them as a core agency with funding towards our museum. I don't know if it has to be eight total or nine, but I just wanted to bring it up to the group.
Does the policy?
I do have each.
Say eight? They're a number? Or is it just a dollar amount?
It says eight.
It says eight agencies in the agenda.
So then we have to change the policy as well.
Right.
And she's brought it up every year that we go over this in budgeting.
But she means it's changed to nine, or we take one off? Which sounds crazy.
Which one sounds crazy?
I'll take one off. I mean, we funded these things for, you know, like, they're core agencies we've been contributing to for, my goodness. For how long?
Oh, a long time.
A long.
I think this started in 2015, but I think it's.
And prior to the policy, we contributed to these same agencies plus several more.
What what determined which agencies we put into?
So ironically, the reason we developed this policy and we did develop the timeline, probably Councilmember Asher, remember finally, we would get to budget deliberations in April and we would have an entire meeting and discussion, possibly two, all around the $205,000 in the $200 million plus budget focused on nonprofit agencies. And they decided to limit it to quasi-governmental things that would provide serbs.
When I got here, it was sort of an annual free-for-all in terms of requests. And when you looked at the list, you recognized that, you know, one, we were spending an entire meeting, if not several meetings, on what amounts to a penny of dollars worth of money to, you know, a $40 million budget, right? And every member of the elected body had their preferences on individual nonprofit entities out there that they had an affinity toward wanting to contribute to. And so what I said was, well, a number of these that we have funded are operating in a manner that are doing something that we might otherwise do as a government entity. You know, meaning the library, things like that. And then the others on the list at that time, because I think there were like 21, 23 on the list at that time, would sort of come and go on the list depending on requests and would sort of get preferential treatment if they were on the list before. So we sort of picked a point to start things over and say, okay, these are quasi-governmental entities and we contribute to those folks because they're providing something that is otherwise generally thought of as a governmental operation in the citizen's mind out there in the city. And we would be more judicious in selecting, you know, because there's 600 and some nonprofits, you know what I mean, in terms of need. So that if you came in YMCA, you weren't going to get on the list every year. But if you had a need in a specific year, then we'd have a funding amount available. You know what I mean? A finite amount available identified. And then select out of the needs that arose for different groups in any specific year. And that's that's how we got to
This eight.
the list of eight separate from the list of those that come in. So I remember one year it was 10,000 to the food bank. And another year it was, you know, money for the pool. And another year it was funding for the Maryland Theater. And it just depended on which entity might have a quantifiable need in a very timely manner that would get on the list for that particular year. But it would keep us at that threshold of having to avoid arguing or deliberating over how to fund $300,000 worth of requests with $200,000 of money. And I've got to tell you, I think it's a little odd, this is just my two cents, that we're here with one workshop of the current body
Yeah.
deliberating on, you know what I mean, what the next body might want
I agree with that.
eight months from now. So to me, I'm good with the money. Whatever that body beyond that decides
Yeah.
to do with the money, because they may come in three months and say, okay, well, I want these other seven entities added. And that can be for that body to decide.
I agree with that.
Yes.
I'm good with saying at this moment, the money is the right amount of money.
Also talk to Holly Place.
So.
One, then two, please start to go.
Holly Place?
Yeah.
Yes. So when we started this process and this policy, we had seven. After the policy, it was, and it wants to add Washington County Historical Society. And the other thing that was deliberated at the time that we drafted this was the fact that there were also agencies that were getting and receiving in the same fiscal year, general fund, taxpayer agency contributions, plus CDBG Public Services funding. And we stopped the duplication of efforts across the city so that this weren't necessarily receiving funding for the same types of things in the same fiscal year.
And I think for non, outside of the eight, so to speak, it was an interest in not funding operations. So that there wasn't that expectation year in and year out of individuals got on the list. But rather say, okay, you need $15,000 for the year, for this year, for this specific thing. You know, then then that's a thing we should focus on for this year. But you shouldn't expect that by doing so this year, that you're suddenly in this pool of entities that's going to get 15,000 every year from here in perpetuity.
So so just to note, we can certainly do that. We can take the amount back. We can leave it at 205,000. And part of the policy says that we're going to come back and have Mayor Council provide direction to myself and to Brooke's position by October of each year annually. And there were some other things that just priority priority wise kind of bumped us to November. But the other part of what happens is, as soon as we do this and it's set, we send out communication in the month, as soon as this is approved, to these agencies, only these agencies. We don't send and open it up to all agents, all nonprofits again, and do a whole collective effort. So we can set the amount, we can still send out our information and requests from these same agencies that are identified here. And then when the new body comes in April, it can be deliberated at that time. But following the policy, we would send to the same group of eight. In the meantime, to get the financial information and the data and the statistics.
And the goal there was to not get to April and get surprises.
Yes.
I mean, that was that was the impetus to saying, okay, we need to set an amount. Everybody know this is the amount so that, you know, we're not sitting here at April and somebody goes, hey, I forgot to tell you, I need 17,000 for this item, you know. And then lobby individual members of the body to sort of get that to happen at the 11th hour of the budget deliberation.
And and if all four, I'm so sorry, if all four are in agreement and that's the direction we want to go, we'll set the amount and the budget. When we send out our memos, we will shift the focus slightly. Because in the memo, what we do is we typically say, you know, these agencies are predefined by our mayor council. And so as long as funding remains and stays in the budget, you would be receiving some type of funding. We would want to make sure we state that we are not going to guarantee them any funding in the new fiscal year 26, that we will include them as always, but to make sure they're being diligent on budget time.
So you can't, so you can't, so the next, as Councilmember Asher was saying, the next body to come in and see if they wanted to keep this the same, that wouldn't be good for you guys and the way they, because of, so you can't wait to have a strategic meeting or anything of the next body because these, the communication needs to go out now.
Right. It gives them time. Because what happens is we notify them, it's usually the end of November, November when we send memos. Gives up the month of December because we need all their financial information back by the beginning of January. But that's not to say, so the policy is okay. It's not to say that come April, the conversations at the budget table can still change. Because that's what happens, the budget is presented, can still have a conversation on how the funding is allocated across the agencies. If anybody needs to make a change, we make a change then. And then what we do is the next time we come back, we make sure we come back, maybe we come back in the summer, right? Maybe we come back, that could, and that would be something that the body could decide then too, that they want to have more conversation around this policy. I will tell you, since I've been here, this is one of the things that it has been most talked about. It it took quite a bit to get to the point where we could develop the policy.
I agree. I mean, this is, I feel like every, I feel like this is probably one of the most conversations that I remember we had every time there's budget. And I remember Councilwoman Burnett and with Holly Place, you know, especially within the last, I think, two, two, two years. Where you guys?
With Michelle, is that it?
I'm sorry.
Thank you.
Thank you. American Rescue Plan ARPA allocations update. Michelle Byrne, Chief Financial Officer, and Brooke Garver, Accounting and Budget Manager.
Yes, so thank you. As a as a quick reminder, the city received $20.4 million in ARPA funding. We received it over two different deposits. This funding has to be spent or obligated by December 31 of 2024. So it's a short month away. You will notice a lot of the items on the consent agenda, on the preliminary consent that the mayor read through, have reallocated ARPA dollars. That is because we are getting closer to that deadline and the term obligated. I've had some interesting conversations with several people across staff. And I understand that everybody has this, hey, this is what the other municipality is done. Or hey, this is what the county said they did all, not Washington County, but all they had to do was do a PO. That is not my perception. That is not what I've heard in the webinars. I think Brooke agrees with me. So we've been very diligent with updating the charts. You're going to see that the charts are split between the projects that are absolutely completed. And then we have changed the chart, the next one to say obligated. And obligated means not only has this body, so no matter the dollar amount, that's the other reason when it consent, you've seen some that are well under the threshold that we would typically bring. We are still bringing every single ARPA item here, no matter how small, so that it can be voted on because we are reallocating it from when we last did these charts. Not only do we have to have that and the purchase order at a minimum, we have to have contract. And so that's, that's one of those things that have been key. And a lot of people say, no, Michelle, that's not true, but you absolutely must. And then when you actually fill out on the IRS portal, there's a whole host of other things that come up that you have to answer when you put in anything in the obligated category. So we'll go through these real quick, but we have a breakdown for you. So you can see on the front by fiscal year, the amount that we have actually spent. So that does not include what is encumbered. So we have spent through the beginning of October, 15.7 million, 77%. I'm sorry, as of November 6, lost track of the months. And the breakdown of how we've spent that, 2.15 in fiscal year 21, 2.1 in fiscal year 22, 2 million in fiscal year 23, 5.2 in fiscal year 24, 4.2 so far in fiscal year 25 through November. And then, as you will see, when we move and actually look at our ARPA charts, when the first one, I'm not going to go through this first page or this chart. These are the completed items. But one of the important things to note is at the very bottom, we've done a little subtotal for everybody. Spending, spent on completed projects, 6.1. So of that money, the the 15.7, 6.1, the project in its entirety is completed. The rest is ongoing items. In addition, we have items that are obligated and started, 13.6. So overall, as of the beginning of November, we were at 19.8 million or just just under 97% obligated. I know, these charts, the more the added is, the larger the smaller.
Zoom in on the paper, though.
And sorry, and some places are really good. Not everybody, a lot of places put across the the state and across other states. They have put out the information per their strategic plan on how the breakout was. We have every single time we've come to, everybody's got their, every single time we've come to council with an update, we have put updated charts on our website because we want to be as transparent as possible. And then this will actually go out on our website. And then myself and Brooke have been working with the departments. These are changing every single day. So even since we prepared this, we have still got changes. But Brooke, I'm going to turn it over to you under the obligated section. We'll just talk about a couple of the ones.
Okay, I'm going to go by categories across the top. First is public health, still working on 32 North, which is the old M and T building. We've spent all of the funding, but.
So all of the, because ARPA is not the only thing funding 32 North. So all of our ARPA that we have set aside and allocated for that project has been spent. But that project itself is not yet finished because we are not yet moved in, which will happen shortly.
Assistance to nonprofits. We have 961,000 obligated. I think we're still going to probably end up getting some of this money back. I don't think they're going to be able to spend it all by the end of the year.
Yes, there's probably these two agencies that are not going to be able to spend, so we're going to. And and we've been in close contact with them since June. But they don't typically send their information, they send it quarterly. So they have a lot of great ideas, but some of them just not staffed the resources. The programs that they had identified aren't quite hitting the numbers and the volume that they needed.
Is it too late for those agencies that may have needed more to get that and put a send it back? Or is that not something that can be done?
Timing wise, I'm not sure how we get the new subrecipient agreements and get it out to everybody to fairly evaluate and get it done by by December 31st. Especially when we think about the holidays.
Under negative economic impact public sector, still working through the outreach coordinator position in HPD. City Hall elevator replacement, which is complete, but I think we still have some outstanding invoices.
Waiting on one final invoice there. But as everybody can see, we finally have a second working elevator in City Hall. It's great.
HPD third floor renovation and bathroom. Helane Park fence.
Which was approved, I think, the prior month.
Fire department replacement windows at Eastern Boulevard, Station 3. HPD fire alarm system. Under infrastructure, pump station, oh, 13, that was scrapped, sorry. Pump station 33, and then the stormwater project at the Hagerstown Field House.
So both of those are ongoing. I think pump station 33 was still estimated to be up and online, Nancy, by the end of the calendar or by January.
End of the calendar year, coming down the street, Mike pushes back about two weeks for the installation of the pole.
The stormwater project over at the Hagerstown Field House is a very, very small component of that project. That project is progressing nicely. Right now, it's looks very a sedigamender. You walk in, the building looks massive, but as soon as they put in the rest of the ports and get in the bleachers and the teams get in there, everybody's going to look at us and say, man, this is so small. But if everybody could see it right now, it's phenomenal and it's on track. They're still anticipating opening by January.
Under revenue replacement, HPD body worn camera maintenance. The collection totes, and I think we just added some recycling bins to that amount. Professional court extension was decreased.
So overall, this is one of the biggest, biggest changes and what has had me scrambling, to say the least. So this project in its entirety was a city-county project and the county managed this project. The city's portion total of this project was 3.3 million, which came in about 600,000 over where we had budgeted. So at the time, we asked to have 1.1 in our ARPA funding to go here. Since that time, Professional Boulevard has been completed, the roadway is open, we're still working through some final things. And so is the county. It's looking like It's looking like we are going to have significant savings in that project and have five hundred and ninety three thousand in ARPA to reallocate out. So what I would like to ask is that we can go ahead and do that. And if that project continues to go over and we need additional money that we be allowed to utilize fiscal year twenty four, general fund balance, reserve surplus. But we have been diligent, Jim Bender has been diligent in touching base with the county to get updated numbers on this project. We did have two different A R C grants that were first priority in the spend that we did, and that was last fiscal year.
What? There's that, that scene in Brewster's Millions where the guy hands him back the twenty thousand at the end, right?
I don't want this to be Brewster's.
And he's like, the county's handing this money back on, oh yeah. Yeah, you got like hurrying to find the contractor right, and she puts it on the napkin. He just happened to forget. Great movie.
Thank you.
Traffic signal upgrades at Antietam Summit in Salem and West Side Avenue. An IT generator as a backup for the server room.
And that's something that has been requested through several of our audits, our auditors as part of what they do. Not the same audit, not the same audit staff that comes in and sits with Brooke and I and goes through all of the processes. But they also send people and separate people in to do an IT audit. And for years, we have been getting, hey, where's your, where's your backup? So it's coming.
Replacement windows for the wastewater treatment plant and the grid coordinator position. Next page, fire department, community risk reduction boards. Wheaton Park Phase Two Playground Equipment. Vehicle fire training props for the fire department. iPads for P CAD, so when they're out in the field, they can use those. Fire department portable training props. Oh, that was, sorry, that was zero. Traffic calming. It's a speedboard trailer and standalone speedboard. Wastewater collection pump station two generator and water pump station four generator.
So on the last page, because unlike in Brewster's Millions, nobody said, hey, city, we're giving you this back. We have legitimate been legitimately been asking for updates, invoices, contractor information. And I finally said to Jim, I can't be January and February. And now we have to get back five hundred and ninety three thousand. So that's why I'm asking that if additional invoices come. We, we've got the information and it looks like we're literally getting one more invoice.
I think that it would be beneficial at this moment then for staff to identify those eligible areas that are like most amenable to expediting exhaustion of the funds quickest. In other words, for me, I would be like, okay, where can I get rid of this the quickest by priority, you know? HPD one, you know what I mean? And, and that are in the eligible criteria and then work your way through that list and go, okay. You know, because some of those subject areas are going to be easier to justify in a timely manner than, than others. That's just my.
Right. So part of the communications that we have been having is a reminder that not just city procurement policy has to be, city procurement has to be followed, but so does the federal regulations. So Sourcewell, is this wonderful? Conglomerate that has already done a lot of bidding, has the R F P, has the contracts, has done a tremendous amount. They do all of the state of Minnesota. But they have, after all the federal dollars went, they changed. And so one of the things that we're able to do is if somebody can find something in Sourcewell, it helps with that procurement because we also no longer have the ability to write R F Ps, get them out, get it back and awarded in time. So actually, it was a perfect segue into our very last page, Brooke. We're going to skip probably the top section because it was things where we had monies that's been allocated out. So a few other things that are coming, right?
So these are proposed and not started. We'll start under negative economic impact, public sector about halfway down. We have HPD equipment for twenty one thousand.
And so I think that that's going to, I think that that will be when your December consent and it's through Sourcewell. And I cannot remember, and I know Chief Kifer is back there. And I think it has something to do with, it's, it's some type of equipment that helps you identify, like when there's a gunshot, it helps identify the sound and pinpoint a location. Is that correct?
Yeah, it's a.
Sorry.
Why should put around, around a community when the gunshot could go off and will actually alert us if it's a rural gunshot or it's a car backfire.
So the key there was for us to find something that was already bid, followed the procurement things. But I actually think just earlier today that we have all the documents that's necessary, so it will be in time for the December consent. Next.
Parks, which I think got scrapped already.
So that, so one that's slated for parks is actually the forty five thousand on the slides is coming off. That is not going to be coming back to you. That's something we're not going to be able to do in time. And isn't something that I, I think is going to, for what we're doing, I don't think it's going to be eligible. So that one's coming off.
Safety, water barriers and traffic barriers in Public Works, eighty seven hundred.
And those are the two that are on November's consent, who's separate.
And then see back under revenue replacement about halfway down, Public Works two way radios. Engineering survey grade.
Both of those are on November consent.
A generator for the light department.
November consent.
Line strapping equipment for Public Works.
November consent. So we do have a few other things. The fire department has already sent us a very detailed. They, so right now, we have, according to this document, four hundred and forty eight thousand dollars. Fire has already identified things that are on contract that would well, well exceed this.
For the retrofit?
Yeah.
I mean, that's where I was going. That seems like an easy.
It would, it would be, it would be larger than that. So yes. The other, the other thing is pump station thirty three, we already have approved it. We put four point seven million in ARPA dollars, council approved. I think the total for the project was just shy of five point two, five, just shy of five point two. So that's already been approved with some contingency. We can move around funding there because we've already got the P O, it's already been encumbered. It went through the procurement process and we have a contract. So if we would need to in December, once you get the consent, we could reallocate additional ARPA funding to that project because it's, it's already covered. The other thing that we're going to look at is our grant funded position. While the problem may no longer be seventy five percent, it'd be like fifty percent, but we can continue. That's one of the few things that we can obligate. That's on a separate contract. That's all the other stipulations. But we are working diligently with these departments. And believe me, they all have ideas. So stay tuned. So by the time you get the December consent, it is, it is going to be obligated. But I feel like every day I get a little bit more back and I'm going, oh, it's obligated too much because I don't want to have to be that person at the end.
And Michelle, we don't use it, we lose it.
Yeah, but it's not obligated by December thirty first. And it would be in, enter, enter the IRS portal in January because that's the, the line to enter. But it has to be obligated. The contracts have to be dated, signed, executed by December thirty one, or you're paying it back to the IRS.
Do, do you have a cutoff date where you're going to say, all right, anything at this point, the rest of what we need to spend can go to that project? And then that way we don't have to give anything back.
Yes. So by the time we get the information and all the forms for the December preliminary. I mean, and honestly, we're going to take a look at what, they're not here, but a look at what fire sent because it's well more than a one hundred percent. Thank you for any findings.
I'm just surprised, I mean, this, this went by fast. I mean.
I just want to be able to breathe and like, we don't have to give any of it back.
Right.
I mean, I've heard it. Blessing and exaltus, right?
All right. Program Open Space Annual Grant Program. Eric Thake, Director of Public Works. Hi, Eric.
Hey, how you doing? The, yeah, we come by, we come here every year annually to ask for a list of projects through Program Open Space. Just a quick reminder of Program Open Space or POS is funded through the Department of Natural Resources. The state puts the obligation on the county or each county. You get an X amount of money and then the county gets projects from every, you know, from themselves and every municipality in town. And then they decide how to divvy up that money. Once they make that approval, then we go back to D N R and say, hey, out of the three, four, five projects we submitted, we only got approval for one and then we submit for that one. And then the state decides if they have the money and funding to, to make it happen. So we submit a list of projects in order of priority to you, including a kind of a five year lookout and that always changes a little bit. But for this year, the three projects in order of priority is reconstruct hole number five at the greens at Hamilton Run. Construct a pickleball court at Fairgrounds Park and replace Ruva Train Museum. The reason it's in this order is the greens, we actually have drawings and, and a plan actually to rebuild this. We tried to do it last spring. We just simply ran out of time and funding. Time was the big thing. We were working on a stormwater project. The course had been closed since November and we wanted to get the course open. We simply just ran out of time. Michelle was good to find money for us, but that money's now moved on to something else. Well, because we have a plan, if we get this approved by the county and approved by the state by, I'll say, July of twenty five, we could actually work on this project in fall of twenty five and have it ready, and have it done, you know, by early twenty six. The larger, the next project would be construct a pickleball court. This is just a concept at Fairgrounds Park. Fairgrounds Park, of course, is a more active park with softball fields and the hockey rink and skate park and all that. And so we have a little corner of the park that, that my staff has said, hey, this might be a good place to construct a new pickleball court, which seems to be very popular. And so we're basing our cost there on, I think, Boons Bar is in the process of building one. And so we're kind of basing our cost on that. And then the last item is replace roofs, the train museum. This is basically a typical shingle roof and we're just looking to replace that with a metal roof that would match the pavilions and the restrooms that were recently built out there. P O S usually is looking for projects that last twenty years. And so let's say you wanted to re-stripe or repaint a tennis court. That would be a no because it wouldn't last that long. But if you're repaving a court and then repainting it, that would probably be a, a good project. We never know how much money we have. We never, we just submit the projects and hope for the best. And I know P O S last year was cut back a little bit. We got one project out of several. So I don't know if we'll get all these or not, but that's, now you can change the priority, that's up to you. But that's, that's how we see the priority on what we want to submit to the Washington County. The projects are due by the end of December and are due by the end of December. So hence the reason to try and get this approval as soon as we can so we can, you know, get these submitted. So.
Would anything at the ice rink ever qualify for something to go on this list, particularly?
Possibly.
The second sheet of ice that they have been begging for, for years.
Yeah. The, the program opens, or P O S was, was really designed to fund open space. Hence its name, obviously. And I think over the years, they've allowed many other types of projects, including indoor. And here we have a roof and they've, they've funded other roofs. Because I think over time, there was only so much open space you could either purchase or improve on. But yeah, let's say we want to do bleachers, indoor bleachers, which the county submitted for last year and got approved for. They last at least twenty years. And so, yeah, there's indoor things that they, they can do. But an indoor sheet of ice can be pretty expensive and we just get a fraction of that.
Right.
Now we.
They're good at fundraising though, so like anything would probably be helpful. I know that they've asked for, you know, they've said, at least since my time here.
Right.
For the second sheet, so.
I, I've heard that over and over again too. And, and with this program, if you request, okay, say for example, we're requesting a hundred twelve thousand dollars for, to redo the hole. If they said, okay, no, we're only going to give you fifty, is that, is it an all or nothing? What you request, either they will provide you the full amount or can they give you partial amounts?
Typically what happens is the Director of Public Works at the county, Andrew Eschman. What you do is you take all your program to the, the Washington County Parks Board. So there's a room full of people and you, you present all your ideas and then they discuss it. And then what's happened before is Andrew will call me and say, look, this is how much money we have. What, what do you want to make work here? So they try to make a project work, if anything, not a partial one, because they know the funding. Our part is ten percent. They try and fund ninety percent. So I don't think, I've never seen them try to just fund a portion of it. So we try to go in.
But I think technically they could, if they reached out and Eric said, sure, I can come up with the funding. We want this project to move forward.
Yep, they could.
I have another question about another project. One of the projects that we had talked about as a body in our strategic planning meeting was lighting the alleyways. And I know that Kathy had said something about it at some point and that that's been a real safety concern and would be very helpful. Would that be something that could, that could be considered in Project Open Space? Because it is open.
Yeah.
I'm just saying.
Usually more around parks and rec.
Okay.
Yes, yeah.
Okay.
Not so much out.
So D N R.
My guess is they would probably not.
Okay, I was just a.
But there are some other state grant opportunities that are, different, different ones that could be, yeah.
I see the next thing that we're talking about. Okay.
Right, yeah. Programming space is really about open space, parks, that's what I'm about.
Well, in answer to all of that, I am fine with the three priorities. Now that you won't find any of the things that I said, so.
Well, the ice rink is going to be a discussion that's going to come up. The, the, their current contract ends June twenty five, the only signed one year contract. And honestly, the equipment's coming to its age, it's coming to the end of its life. It's useful life is, and so we have to service and make the decision as a city what we're going to do next.
Yeah, I'm sure.
Because rebuilding the ice equipment, just rebuilding it's probably three million dollars. Yep. The quote we got was two point seven, so I'm going to round it up to three by the time we get around to doing it. And so there has to be a decision made by this, by this mayor and council, or the next mayor and council, what, what we're going to do next. And so it's just, you know, it's been twenty, over twenty five years and so it's, and that's why we've been peacefully, yeah. So that'll be a, that'll be a tough conversation, I think.
Yeah.
Unfortunately.
Absolutely necessary.
But asking, asking P O S for three million dollars would never, it would never happen. They wouldn't get that much money. And like I said, the state's been cutting back on it a little bit too. So we go with the list.
Are you guys good?
Yeah, yeah.
Well, we'll bring back, there'll be a motion sheet for the next meeting for you to approve for that. We'll move forward on it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I will look forward to your updates. You'll let us know what is happening on the agenda.
Grant application, urgency, energy efficiency, conservation block grant from the Department of Energy. Jim Bender, our city engineer. Hi, Jim.
So another result of the bipartisan infrastructure act is additional funding was made to the Department of Energy for them to dole out through these energy grants, the energy efficiency and conservation block grant program. Basically what they do is they went through and allocated a certain amount of money to a whole list of municipalities throughout the state and well, in every state. And really, the money is ours for the t- And really, um, the money is ours for the taking. We just had to send in a, a grant application, uh, and tell them how we were going to spend this money. So what we did is staff got together, we talked about different projects that we might be able to do. And we came up with three main projects that we think we could accomplish fairly easily. Um, first would be replacing the exterior lights of Potterfield Pool. Um, hopefully that's going to make it a little bit brighter out there, maybe increase evening activities at the pool, um, and also save energy, you know, because we're going to be using more efficient fixtures for that. Um, replacing all the fluorescent lights in City Hall. Um, mo, if you go walking around City Hall and look at the various offices, it's almost all the old four-foot fluorescent tube lights, which are not very efficient. We would replace those with LED fixtures, um, to get, gain some energy savings from that. And we don't have, um, firm prices on those two, the first two projects. We have ballpark prices, but we're thinking that we'll have enough money to do the first two projects and then any remaining funds under that grant, we would work with the Hagerstown Light Department to convert streetlights, um, from the older type fixtures to LED fixtures to save money there. So really that's, that's all this is, uh, we just needed to send in the application. The city's grant policy requires that if we're getting more than fifty thousand dollars, have to come to council and get your nod of the head to, to do that.
And so just a note, again, federal grant, um, they made it easier for us. They already allocated the money, all we had to do was let them know how we were going to spend it. But the reality of all you got to do is let us know how you're going to spend it was a tremendous effort, a lot of time, and not a small one-hour type of application that went into that. So Jim did tremendous work in getting that all done. But I will tell you, the federal dollars that are available are a blessing and a curse. A lot of the restrictions and regulations aren't as simple as everybody thinks, even when they say, hey, we're giving this to you, come get it, we've made it easier. It's, it's oftentimes the complete opposite. So I do want to thank Jim for all the time, because it was a tremendous effort to get that application across. So thank you, Jim.
Yeah, thank you.
You're welcome. You're welcome.
Good, good.
This is awesome. Yeah. Goodbye.
Thank you. Stay right there, Jim.
Yep.
Next, we have Safe Streets for All Safety Action Plan update, Jim Bender, city engineer.
Right, so I just wanted to give you an update, um, in.
Please.
Toward the end of twenty twenty-three, um, we received funding, uh, again, federal money, uh, through another safety program, um, through the Department of Transportation. And what that, what that money could be used for, um, was a couple of different things. One, you could do a safety action plan, which was, is the first step in their process. You have to have the safety action plan that's approved before you can turn around and apply for money to actually implement a project or go to construction. So we decided that, okay, let's go ahead and use this money, um, get a safety action plan approved and, and move forward. So the city decided to work with the MPO, Hagerstown Eastern Panhandle MPO, because they already had a consultant team on board to do this type of study or prepare this type of plan. And so we are using their consultants to, um, put this plan together. And it's a lot of gathering data on crash history, on speeding, on pedestrian, uh, injuries, bicycle injuries. And they put that all together and start looking for patterns or things that they can do, um, that we can implement to try to address some of those problems. So where we are in the process, we had a, um, developed a stakeholder group, which included, uh, emergency responders, uh, the school system, um, a member of our Board of Traffic and Parking is on the, is one of the stakeholders, a couple of other groups. Um, and at that stakeholder meeting, they reintroduced the idea of, uh, how these plans work and they got an initial look at the data that had been collected by the consultant to that point. Uh, just this afternoon, we had our second stakeholder meeting. And basically what that, the main thrust of that was to review an online survey that, uh, we had put out back in September that let residents, you know, point out concerns, safety issues, things that they see in the community that are transportation-related issues or problems. Had almost two thousand people respond to that survey, which is pretty amazing. And they generated a lot of different, uh, comments, uh, had a lot of concerns. They, a lot of comments about the temporary speed humps out on Du Highway.
Um. How much longer are they there, by the way?
They, they are, they are supposed to be there, um, they were supposed to be removed before Thanksgiving, but State Highway has not told me a definite date yet. So I think within the next two weeks.
I mean, I know we did that and all, but wow.
Every day I'm like, they're gone now.
You know. I'd be saying, I told you so for now.
Yeah.
Thank you.
I will, I will pass that on. So just, you know, just reading through here, I just attached some slides out of the, um, the results from the survey. Um, not surprising, at least to me, the number one concern of drivers, pedestrians, bicyclists is distracted driving. That seems to be the number one thing that everybody focuses on and sees that that's a, a concern. I'm not sure how easy it's going to be to address that, you know, in this, in this age of cell phones and constantly being distracted by things, but that, I thought that was interesting. There's also, um, as part of that, there was also a mapping tool where people that were responding to the survey, they could actually drop pins on the map of Hagerstown and write a comment about, okay, at this location, here's the problem that we have, uh, which is a really good way to collect data.
Wow.
So moving forward, um, they are still crunching the numbers and the data that they collected from the survey. Um, plan to have a third stakeholder meeting in January. Um, and what we'll do is identify probably three different corridors around the city where we'll actually go out and do a safety audit, um, to see what the problems are and see what potential solutions there are. And then moving toward having a draft plan completed by March of twenty twenty-five. And then we would bring that, uh, that final plan to the council, uh, probably April or May twenty-five, um, to get your, to get the body's blessing on that. Get that plan approved and that opens us up to apply for construction grants to do some of the projects that we'd like to do.
Nice. Sounds good, yeah.
Thanks, Jim.
All right.
Thanks, Jim.
Thank you.
Well, yeah. Wow.
Community Center, since, yeah, can, Community City Center Plan, ten-year update. Kathy Marr, Director of Planning and Code Administration, and Jill Thompson, Director of Community and Economic Development. Hi.
Hi, good evening.
Good evening.
Um, our goal tonight is to recap the accomplishments of the City Center Plan. Um, we're going to hit some of the highlights. Uh, in your packet, there is a more detailed report that walks through each of the eight catalysts project and, and provides, um, a significant amount of more detail. Um, in the PowerPoint presentation, there were a couple of, um, fonts that didn't come through. So if anyone needs, uh, an updated copy of that, it was just some title text, send that around.
Not actually bullish, it's a pointing error.
Oh, yeah, okay.
I see now.
Uh, so the implementation of the City Center Plan is certainly a cross-department effort, um, among many city departments. So we want to thank all of the staff who have worked on this over the ten-year period. I'd also like to thank Emily Conrad, who put together this report. She's our Economic Development Coordinator and she took the information from each of the action reports, um, year over year and assembled them into a ten-year document and did a great job, I believe, putting that together. Again, what we want to do is recap the accomplishments and why this is important is, um, because developers and investors often look at, does a downtown have a strategic direction and a plan? And are they organized to accomplish a plan in order for their investment to be protected? Uh, so we want to share this report on our website. Um, throughout the last ten years, we have given copies to investors and developers from outside of the area. And I believe it is one of our tools to having attracted some of the investors that have come from outside of the Hagerstown area. And it provides a, a level of assurances to developers related to the investment that they're going to make in our community. So just to run through some of the slides, and Kathy and I, um, have tag teamed and giving reports over the last ten years and we're going to break it down and walk through each of the catalyst projects. So we released the report in July of twenty fourteen. The consultant, Urban Partners, spent more than a hundred and thirty hours collecting community engagement. Uh, the plan is a data-driven roadmap that provides a strategic direction for the redevelopment of our downtown. It's flexible and it acts as a guide more than being as a prescriptive plan. Uh, it envisioned a hundred and twenty-five million of new investment over the ten years, with seventy-five percent of that coming from the private sector. I did some rough calculations coming into this meeting and, and I estimate that we are over two hundred million in investment in our downtown over the last ten years. And, um, if you look at projects that are in a concept phase or in a planned stage, that number could go as high as two hundred and sixty-four million. Currently, I think the, the balance between public sector investment and private sector is roughly forty percent private sector, so not quite at that seventy-five percent projected by the consultant. But I think that that is just because the public investment has not yet fully been leveraged. And I think we, um, with what is in conceptual planned stages, can get to that seventy-five percent level. So there were eight catalyst projects. There were five that represented new development initiatives and three that represented expansion of existing programs or projects. We're going to walk through each of these, so I won't read this slide to you. And then the consultant provided us a, a visual geographic mapping tool that showed the geography of each of the eight catalyst projects. So starting with catalyst project number one, the goals of this in two thousand fourteen envisioned new office space being built, uh, outside of downtown and the need for downtown to be competitive in the office space market by providing a conceptual site, uh, option. Uh, the site concept envisioned a hundred and fifty-four thousand square feet of new construction. Uh, the plan identified that parking needs, um, were satisfied for the first seventy thousand square feet of development um, and that a new parking deck would be needed to support additional growth. In terms of, um, action items in this area, we developed concept drawings. We also entered into an exploratory agreement with a developer. The developer required to attract a tenant with at least a twenty thousand square foot lease before a project would move forward. But just by putting forward the renderings and exploring this, we, um, we were able to have conversations with developers, although, uh, we weren't successful in actually building, um, an office product. Of course, the office market, it is soft and it softened to a great degree, degree as a result of the COVID pandemic. There was a decision to add a portion of the central lot to the competitive negotiated sale process. And we're currently marketing that property and seeking proposals from the development community for infill development. And that might be office, it might be something else. But that process continues, um, although, um, not a full start on this catalyst project, we were able to, um, continue to foster the concept that was envisioned. Some of the development activity, um, that has created a number of mixed-use properties in downtown. So while we weren't successful with new construction, we've had a number of developers look at, um, the office market as well as mixed-use development, both commercial and residential and a number of, uh, reuse of vacant buildings. So the Hub City Parking Garage created, uh, new parking that supports this new development. Early and still very strong is Bowman's work at thirty-four through thirty-eight, the Bulls and Bears in the adjacent building for office development. And just a few examples that are in, uh, the slide also include Bowen Commercial Group at two South Potomac Street, Carrie and Troy Cosner of the Franklin Project at thirty-four West Franklin, which has first floor commercial space and the co-work space HQ by Regis at thirty-three West Franklin and also one hundred West Franklin, another example of office space in our downtown. Um, not included in the side, in the slide is Bowman Development's work on the Masonic Temple that created, uh, upper floor, uh, commercial space as well as first floor, um, retail space. Turn it over to Kathy next.
Thank you very much. Uh, catalyst project number two is the Maryland Theater Expansion Project. This actually predates the Urban Improvement Project that saw the Maryland Theater expand. This, at this time, they were recommending, they recognized that the Maryland Theater was an important part of the downtown and that it, for it to prosper, it would really affect the prosperity of the rest of the downtown. So this was recommending that we help them expand, not only, uh, at that time, we weren't really thinking about the building, we were thinking in terms of more activities at the building. So it was suggesting grow from a hundred and fifty to two hundred and twenty-five performance days and reach an annual audience of sixty thousand or more. Um, and they, at the time, the Maryland Theater was doing a lot of back-of-the-house improvements. So this suggested that's a great idea, keep it up, keep up the good work. And, um, and so the results, you can see in the photos that are on the slide right now, the, uh, building on the left, that used to be the front entry to the Maryland Theater back, back in the day when it was first built in the teen, the nineteen teens. Um, you entered through the bottom of that building, it was apartments above. And then in the seventies or so, that building burned down and we wound up with the configuration you see on the left there. And we had that for many, many years, that, where the theater was operating, uh, with a very tiny little lobby. And so what we've got here is some, some data, and this is as a result of the Urban Improvement Project, where the governor, um, Governor Hogan committed a bunch of money to help with an urban improvement project, was, Maryland Theater was a big part of it, expanding the Barbara English School for the Arts was another and supporting expansions at the university system of Maryland. So what we have here is thanks to over fourteen million dollar project, which saw a million from the city, over two million from the county, uh, nearly six million from the state and nearly five million in private, um, donations and requests of over fourteen million dollar project that did what we see on the right slide there, which was to put a very large four-story structure in front of the nineteen teens historic auditorium. And with the, with all of this new space, they have been able to do a lot more. And so they have achieved, um, it was thirty-five thousand square feet that was added on. They have, as hopefully everybody, at least in this room, has been to the new facility and know that there's a ballroom on the top floor, there's, uh, another room, uh, space on the sec, on the third floor. They have a huge lobby now, two different concession areas, new modern bathrooms, which are delightful, because before, you know, you'd, you'd have the halftime of whatever you're looking at and you.
And everyone.
And hope, and hope you make it back in time. Now it's a beautiful facility. Um, let's see. There we go. And so they, um, they did this renovation and they opened up in, I think it was October of twenty nineteen. And of course, by March, um, they had to shut down, unfortunately, because COVID. But they were open in October. And as of twenty twenty-three, the, the organization has hosted three hundred and eleven events and performances, of which a hundred and thirty-one were open to the public. And, um, as of twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four, the audience attendance was more than sixty thousand, which is great. So it's a beautiful facility. Anybody out there who may be watching this broadcast, they should check out the Maryland Theater, see what they've got going on there and go purchase, because it's just great.
Our third catalyst project was, uh, the expansion of the university, um, system of Maryland at Hagerstown, USMH, and to also support student housing. So our, our goals for this catalyst project were to support the growth of USMH's, uh, students and its programs and to capture student housing opportunities. The plan envisioned three projects creating twelve units of housing, which would support twenty-four students. Our accomplishments here were four housing projects that involved a relationship with USMH. Our accomplishments here were four housing projects that involved a relationship with USMH and resulting in 31 units of housing. So really exceeded the vision of the plan with this accomplishment. Many of the projects listed below are two bedrooms, so this is really accommodating 50 plus students between the projects of the Patterson in 2015, our initial partnership with USMH and a private developer. Followed by the Antietam Building in 19, in 21, we did the Nicodemus Building and in 22, the Roslin Building. Just a few before and after pictures. This is Nicodemus Building or 170 West Washington Street. And also this involved even before 2013, the acquisition of this property through the foreclosure process that allowed for the demolition of a motel that was to the rear site of this property. So a dramatic transformation. And then another transformation is the Antietam Project, just showing a couple of before and after pictures. And then the demonstration of upper floor housing through the partnership with USMH spurred additional housing development from the private sector. So just three projects shown on this slide include the Franklin, also the project at 44, 46 East Franklin and the Uptograph Project on West Washington Street. These projects alone total 32 additional housing units on top of that original goal. And then overall, some statistics that I have in housing development downtown can be estimated at approximately $56.2 million of new investment, creating 267 units, either new or renovated units. And with projects that are in a concept phase or a planned phase, that that number could go above 300 units downtown.
Catalyst project number four, the plan recommended that our community explore bringing a hotel conference center and Heritage Center slash government department, there's a lot going on there, to the downtown. And the feeling being that if we could attract the hotel downtown, that the goal would be to go after something that's not in the community already. And they, they've referred to that as upper upscale, like a Sheridan, Wyndham, Hilton kind of product. And that program and that they felt in order for it to really be able to flourish, it would be important to have a conference center next door, which it was assumed the government would. And then another way to, to help draw, put people to the hotel suggested a Civil War Heritage Park and Center and Park also adjacent to the facility. The 2024 results are the city staff and the council discussed for quite a while the idea of acquisition of at least where the main hospital was to do the Civil War Park. We were exploring, you know, other people, partners to help fund that. But it just, it didn't work out timing wise for the city to do that. And since then, the property has sold to a private developer and they are exploring opportunities for the site, including the possibility of rezoning to make it more flexible for what they would like to do. Catalyst project number five would be to create a trail to link City Park and then Washington County Museum of Fine Arts and the downtown and also to encourage new housing in the area. It was suggesting add 31 new townhouses along the trail in the first 10 years and rehabilitate the Dagmar and three other West Antietam Street buildings as 85 locked apartments. So we've got here the results 10 years later. Total new housing units along the trail, the Uptograph Building was 53, West Washington Street had put in 21 units. Well, that's what's been put along the trail currently. Jill went over already all the other housing that's gone on, that's not exactly down on the trail. But we do have other projects being explored right now that would be on the trail or in the vicinity that would create new housing, which is very exciting. And then the, the aspect of the catalyst project referring to the trail, the, I've got some notes here. The city immediately jumped right ahead, thanks to Rodney Tissue and the Maryland Council, jumped right into the cultural trail. Thought that was an exciting thing to do and worked on that and created approximately a one mile walking trail to connect the downtown A and E District, which was basically, it came as far as Antietam Street. And it went all the way down to Park Circle, which we then would pick up the sidewalk out in the park. So you could then connect all of that. We also, through the Urban Improvement Project money that we were getting from the state and through the goals of the business community, we worked on creating an open space area back in behind the Maryland Theater and County Building and Bispa. That could be for, potentially for events, but also mainly to be a sort of a staging area for the school buses, tour buses, collecting the trash, that kind of things, a service area for back in behind there. And so the urban, phase one of the Urban Improvement Project, which you just mentioned, that was up over $2 million and it was kind of evenly split between the city and the state. Phase two, we then moved on to, and it was finished up a couple of years ago, extended the trail from Antietam Street up past the District Court Building and now the brand new parking deck. And then up behind the Uptograph Building and beside it, into where 43 West Washington Street was torn down. And that little area there, the wide area of the trails referred to as Hatters Plaza. And that I got fresh in from Gin Bender, that was about $1.3 million of investment for the acquisition as well as the construction. And the great thing about this trail, not only do people love it and it's a great way to walk around and which is, I have been doing lately under doctor's orders. But anyway, it's a great place.
I saw it, I witnessed it.
It's a great place to walk. And it also, we, we also did a public art master plan as part of that project because we thought a trail's not enough for Hagerstown. We were going to load it up with public art. So we hired a consultant, create, working with the community, create a public art master plan. And at this point, we have 18 public art installations along the trail. Maryland Council have approved the 19th one that should be going in in the spring. And that one will be called Train of Thought. I'm thinking maybe it has something to do with trains, but look forward to seeing that. And then another thing is not only did this trail run beside the new parking garage on West Ant, on West Antietam Street, it also runs right up to the Meredith's Ballpark. And which is the nation's newest and most, I guess we could still say this, the newest and most innovative ballpark, Meredith's Park, home of the Hagerstown Flying Box Cars. And it's a great facility, had really great turnout in its very first year. We look forward to the second year. And then also we have pictured on here, in the middle is the new ballpark. On the right is a trail access back to the ballpark. And on the left is the new parking deck, which opened up in the summer.
So catalyst number six was to expand downtown arts and events programming. And the goals to leverage resources to produce more frequent events, to build upon the atmosphere created by popular downtown events that were happening back in 2014. And to utilize the Main Street program and collaborate with the Maryland Theater. And just some of our accomplishments in this area. Certainly in 2015 was the year that we achieved the Main Street designation for Hagerstown. And we worked on launching and growing that program. We maintained and renewed the state arts and entertainment district designation. It was last renewed in 2022 for an additional 10 years. That takes us to 2032. In 2019, we created an event guidebook, which helps event organizers who are looking at downtown as a venue for their events have a guide for planning their events. In 2022, the city created the Community Engagement Officer and Brittany Arizmendi is doing an outstanding job as she oversees the downtown events, the Main Street Program, the Arts and Entertainment District and the Farmers Market Program. The city routinely seeks funding through the State Department of Housing and Community Development for the Main Street Program as well as State Arts Council for the A and E District. And so funding allows for this expanded programming. The city produces approximately 30 events per year, possibly a higher number than that. The city supports downtown event producers from outside organizations through event sponsorship. That program has been reworked by Brittany and is now called the Downtown Event Grant Program. So some increased efficiency on that program and approximately $50,000 is distributed to on average 2023 organizations per year with a maximum grant of 3,000. In fiscal year 24, total events was approximately 74 events with attendance downtown of over 121,000 people. And then catalyst number seven, the farmers market. The goal here envisioned in the 2014 plan was to expand the operations of the farmers market to explore private management opportunities and to capture a portion of the market for specialty foods. And in 2015, we did seek a private operator through an RFP process, but we weren't successful in that. We did make improvements to the market in partnership with the downtown movement by painting the booths and reconfiguring the booth layout. There was a hiring of a part-time staff assistant to manage the market. We did other partnerships, including pop-up shop events that took place at the market. We entered into a partnership with the Valley Co-op who utilized the back room. And we also looked at the fee structure, waiving market fees to attract new vendors. We did navigate COVID with modified outdoor operations of the farmers market. And then we explored maintaining the market as an outdoor operation and explored repositioning the market house real estate as a, as an asset. The market house was added to the competitive negotiated sale process and was sold to a private developer in 2022. The farmers market continues and the property was repositioned successfully. And it currently operates as seasonal outdoor farmers market in early years in, I think, 22, 23 in the market house parking lot and currently being operated in Hatters Plaza.
And the final catalyst project recommended in 2014 plan was the expanded and targeted homeownership support. Plan recommended aggressively marketing the city's down payment assistance program, targeting neighborhood first support programs and infrastructure and amenity improvements, continuing acquisition rehab and resale program that we've been engaged in, establish more frequent rental licensing inspections and continue excessive nuisance enforcement programs. First up, we'll talk about the downtown assistance and the homeownership program. Back in 2016, we were awarded 50,000 from the state to replenish a program that we had, that we had exhausted the funds in. And we matched it so that we would have 100,000 available to offer for this program and we had 13 home buyers. And then at some point, I guess in fiscal year 2019, the Maryland Council started setting aside a certain amount. And this year it was 165,000, I'm not sure what it was in 2019, but setting aside an amount each year for this program. And between 2019 and 2023, we invested $600,000 and helped 85 new homeowners in the city. And in order to get these, it's actually given out as a loan, but if you live in the house for five years as your primary residence, it's forgiven and it becomes a grant.
Wow.
And it seems to me, I sit on this grant review committee that Jill has, as soon as this funding becomes available, it seems like it's committed already. It's very popular.
Good. It's a great program.
Yeah. And then homeownership program, the city leveraged state and federal funding to do some acquisition renovation efforts to create homeownership opportunities. Not included on here is we acquired through a state foreclosure process, the property at the bottom of the hill on South Prospect Street on the left. And we turned that over to a homeowner for them to do the fix up.
Was it 216? Prospect?
Seems like it would be a higher number than 216.
It was, it was both of those. It was what Kathy's referring to and 216.
And then we, we actually acquired what had been a four unit building at 261, 263 South Prospect Street. And we did the renovations there and turned that into two units. So it's, it's almost like a duplex with one unit on each side. And we now have two homeowners in there. We also renovated 64 East Franklin Street, Second Empire Building, down near the little one story former pizza shop. And now I think it still has a restaurant sign out front. That was a beautiful project. I was in there after it was finished. And that has a homeowner inside of it. And we also did two projects on Johnson, North Johnson Street, 212 to 14 and 441, 443. The goal being to increase homeownership in the city, to assist with that effort. And then we also, neighborhood first program created a liaison position with ARPA funds in 2020, work with neighborhoods first through the police department. And that's Ashley Roush, who you've seen at this table many times. Position will continue to be funded and expanded even after the initial ARPA funding runs out. And then expanded and targeted homeownership support continues with programs that are managed in PCAD. One being the, the license programs, there's the rental licensing program, which has been in effect much longer than the, the life of the community city center plan. And it's been at this point between 2014, when this plan was created, and now the number of rental units has increased by 850. We're now up to 9,790 rental units in the, in the city. We also created, last year, after much conversation, a lodging facilities rental program. To address some nuisance issues we were experiencing at, at some of the hotels in town. So this program now requires all the hotels, motels and Airbnbs in the city to be licensed with the city, have an initial round of inspections. Where's your water?
I was gonna say.
Are you done?
Oh, you got it. I knew it was somewhere around you.
And so there's an initial inspection. At that point, based on the results of the inspection, determine if they're going to be a tier one or a tier two hotel, the tier one hotels, then move on, they're in good shape, we don't have to worry about them as much. Those that become tier two hotels, they need to be inspected again the very next year. Because we want to make sure that they continue to do things to make them appealing to the traveling public as well as to local residents that are living in them long term. And so then the, the other thing that we, we are purchasing software, I think we have already purchased it to help us identify Airbnbs, because if you've ever noticed, if you go to an Airbnb website, they tell you, you've got them in your community and they show a big circle, but you know, you can't track them down. So software will help us because this program requires them also to be licensed to make sure that they are being maintained in a way that will be safe for the traveling public or whoever else might want to stay there, whether it's a local person for some period of time. And then we have the vacant structure program and we've had that for quite a while. And we've actually dedicated staff to it, which has really helped us to focus on it. And as a result, the number of vacant properties have been reduced by half from a high of 518 in 2017 to 263 this year. The, in 2023, the Maryland Council requested the program be amended to add in if we have vacant storefronts in the downtown, that would require them to be licensed. Basically, you would have to be vacant, a storefront would have to be vacant six months, as is the case for anything that becomes subject to this licensing program. But also for the downtown, not just a vacant storefront, but a vacant storefront, not in shell condition. And shell condition meaning it has the basic systems in place that are up to code, so it would be easy for a tenant to move in. Those that do not have it like that, it's very difficult because oftentimes tenants do not have a huge pocketbook to fix up the space to code requirements. And so this way, if the property owner has gone to that trouble, then they do not have to be in the vacant structures program. Because it shouldn't take too long to fill it because it's in great shape. And so as of October of 2023, there were 22 structures identified with first floor vacancies totaling 34 vacant storefronts. And hopefully, a year later, those numbers are better.
So just to wrap up the, that was your last slide, Kathy, you covered all that. Yeah. So just to wrap up, there's a, a final section in the report of partnership projects that cover multiple catalyst projects. So those include the One Gigabit City Initiative, where we were among the first cities in the United States to offer that level of internet service to residential and commercial customers. And then also the Urban Improvement Project that Kathy mentioned primarily connected with catalyst project number two, but also touched on many of the others. And there's And there's a further description of the cultural trail. So again, I think that recapping a ten year set of accomplishments is important for recognition of of the work that we have done, but also to position this work to build investor confidence. And investors look at a plan that got published back in two thousand fourteen and they look at those accomplishments when they evaluate whether to come into a community and the strength of the return on their investment when they make a commitment to a community. So we appreciate your support and we look forward to the next ten years of a downtown plan. We brought to you the outline of an RFP that was issued back in October. The deadline for submissions is this coming Monday and we're looking forward to seeing the consultant pool that will be evaluated. And then we'll bring back to you a recommendation for the consultant to hire for development of the next ten year downtown plan and happy to answer any questions.
And we did get a grant to help with that project.
Yes, we did. We received an Apple Agent Regional Commission grant to help pay for the costs of the next ten year plan.
Which was great, we appreciate it.
Wow. What an outstanding recap. You're just like, wow, forgot about that. Oh, that's right. Well, yeah, that was cool, you know, very encouraging. I look forward to the next ten years.
We've got a lot of calls. A lot has happened in ten years. I was telling Michelle that darn, it's like a whole other city. So, yeah, thank you for that recap. It was very good.
Great job, Emily.
Thank you. Good job. Yeah. Yeah, right. All right, city, I mean, chief financial.
I didn't have any, but you know, Brittany Arizmendi is a slave driver. So I have to let everybody know about at least three events. Next Tuesday, we mentioned it briefly, next Tuesday, the nineteenth, from five thirty to seven thirty, the US Capitol Christmas tree lighting event, hosted right here, driving through our city. Going to be lots of fun activities surrounding that in a two hour time slot. Then on Friday, November the twenty second, is Holiday Fest, followed on Saturday, November the twenty third, with the Holiday Market in downtown tree lighting. Lots of wonderful holiday festival, I'd love to leave it to them. Just around the corner.
Thank you. Councilwoman McIntyre.
So probably like many of us, I am still processing the election and its results on many different levels. And from a local perspective, of course, it is my last work session, which is somewhat bittersweet. But, you know, over the past week, there was, you know, one of the a very popular restaurant has closed down. That's the second very popular restaurant that's closed down. And while this presentation just a minute ago was positive and the last ten years have been very, you know, focused on development and things. Between that and the fact that there was another shooting last night. And again, I appreciate HPD's swift response and but to the next administration, there is still a lot of work to be done. And I am really looking forward to gaining that optimism back again and and feeling as if the body that will replace us, most of us here, is going to take that into consideration with our strategic planning and really focusing on feet on the street. Because owning a business myself, it's very, very challenging, very challenging. So I hope that there is a lot of, you know, I hope that the work that gets done is strategic in nature, so. That's it.
Thank you. Councilwoman Burnett.
Nothing tonight, I'll wait till next week.
Okay. Councilmember Shelly.
I will sort of add something I want to say similar to what Councilmember McIntyre had said. And that is that, you know, looking at this ten year plan, to which I was just a resident for nine, for all but nine months of it. So from the outside looking in, there's a lot of successes here, cultural trail, things like that. But there are a lot of places where we came up short. And I hope that there's a lessons learned or some sort of a a follow up on on the parts of this that came up short. And that's incorporated, I hope, in in the next administration's ten year plan. Because as Councilmember McIntyre said, you know, we still have, I think it thinks that here, twenty three vacant storefronts in downtown. And unfortunately, we just added at least one more. You know, and we still have some public safety concerns. So I really, I love this, this is a great kind of encapsulation of the last ten years. But, you know, I've always tried to be very positive and hopeful about what's to come. And I hope the next administration, you know, really has a good vision for what that looks like. So, thank you.
Thank you. All right, before I give my comments, there's two requests for letter of support in front of you. One is for bulk management, for redevelopment of the historic Mueller Building. And then the other one is a request for letter of support from us as a body for Washington County Museum of Fine Arts. And this is for architecture services component. You guys okay with me?
Yes.
Yes.
All right. And in my closing comments, I want to, first of all, say thank you to our city administrator, who is away at another conference, but we were both down at Cambridge, Maryland for Maryland Municipal League's Fall Conference and a bunch of the vendors and stuff. I never got to see Scott while I was down there. He must have just kept missing each other. But one of the things that a lot of the vendors and other elected officials were saying was about him and his leadership. And so a great conference. I had the wonderful opportunity to be a facilitator for academy core classes. And that's a great way that I'll continue to be able to show up at the conferences moving forward. And so I'm really excited about that. I want to say thank you to the Girl Scout troop. I forget the number, their number, but they were just here last week. Oh, my goodness, it was about eight little girls. And matter of fact, I think it was six feet, yes, it was six because they all fit up there perfectly. If anything in your drawer has been moved or anything, I mean, they were definitely they were definitely like, can we look in the drawer as they were looking in the drawer? But they came in and I let them kind of run and tell me what they wanted to see. And they wanted to definitely sit at the at the tables and the in the desk and kind of have their own meeting. And it was really cool with Girl Scouts. And so thank you to the parents that brought them by. They were really ecstatic and they had great questions. One of them said that I think that if I was sitting and she was sitting in this seat, it's Councilmember Farini's seat, I would take all the money from the very rich people and give it to the very poor people. And I said, you are not going to get elected if you say it like that. She reworded it and reframed it and rephrased it and then it definitely came out better. But again, it's that type of work with those young people that, you know, is very important, probably my favorite thing to do. I'm going to say I, about the restaurant closing, yeah, it feels very, feels very hard, hurtful. But I also want to, on the flip side, just remind the restaurants downtown to that the 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 people and the structure of whose downtown has changed and shifted. And one of the things that I don't see that have an issue with is the Broadax. And so I always hear folks say that they have this hard time of getting people into their establishment or keeping people, you know, coming in. And I would just say, maybe maybe talk to Bob at the Broadax and ask, what is it? What is it that he is able to do? And I'm only saying that because he doesn't, Bob and I went to school together since, I believe, second grade. And he doesn't, you don't see him engaged in a lot of different things. You don't see him at stuff. But for some reason, that that spot in that place has been open and is constantly full and constantly visited. And so I just think that for us as folks that are here in Hagerstown, to always find ways and try to find ways to kind of maybe be creative and maybe open your doors and your hearts to a different thing or something new or try a new customer, you know, try to market to a different customer. And in reference to the shooting that happened, I I'm excited about the the body that's, the new body that's coming. And the reason why is because a lot of the safety issues is in the community that looks like me. And I think that in order for us to have what we need, we need to have us at the table when it comes to public safety and when it comes to policing. I think that it's very difficult for the black and brown community in Hagerstown to find their their space within government at times. And I think I thought that with me and Councilwoman Burnett, that we would create a great bridge to that community. And it feels like we have kind of, at times, gotten further apart and even further away from that community. And so my prayer for the next selected body is that they build that bridge and that there's a much more, a commitment to policing our own community and keeping it safe, if that makes sense, versus a requirement for, you know, just the police or just leaders to kind of do it. I would like to see moms and and dads be way more accountable for what's happening in the community. And I want to also say that the young people that are on the bicycles, that are holding up traffic, I don't know if you know that your kid is doing it, but if your kid has a bike and is leaving out with about fifteen other kids on bikes, then your kid may be one of the ones that is causing a safety concern. And I think we should have conversations with our kids about bike safety and about road safety. I want to say to the parents of the Junior Hubs football team, I want to say thank you. Thank you for finding new ways to communicate in order to address the concerns of the kid's championship game being taken away. It's kind of hurtful being the mayor of the city and also a grandmother that has a young man on that team hearing that Hagerstown raises their kids to be trash, that our kids are animals. And it's just, it's very hurtful to know that year after year that a specific team has been able to treat our families and our kids that way. And it also sucks a lot that you only hear how people have responded to the racial slurs or to the monkey sounds. And you don't hear enough of us coming together to address that. I think that if we take and pay more attention to what is happening in children, then we would have less violence and crime in the streets. And with that, we're adjourned.